Hello and welcome to another special edition of the podcast. I'm your host, Billy Terraccio, joined by Gilbert Council candidate Erin Accorso. How are you doing today?
I'm good. Thank you for having me, Billy. I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. I have to tell you, people really appreciate the candidates that are willing to get out there and talk and put their message out.
As candidates, we should. We need to get our message out and it's important that people understand who they're voting for. I'd rather have an educated voter vote against me than a non-educated voter vote for me because they like my name or they like, you know, who I, you know, my family or something like that. But they, I want people to know who they are getting and who they are voting for when they go to the ballot box and when those people are sitting on the dais eventually.
Well, that sounds great. I agree. Most of us, when we get ballots, don't know who our candidates are. And it's hard to get to know those candidates, but this is a great format. Who are you? If people vote for you, what are they getting?
They're getting a family man, one who is concerned about the, our families in our community. We need to make sure that our community is being handled the way that families need it to be handled and not the way others want our families to be handled. I am coming from a definitely a family's first perspective. I'm a, I'm a common guy. I don't own my own business. I, I'm here to serve. I don't, I'm not independently wealthy. I work for somebody else and I'm, I, again, I come, I come to serve the people and I want to hear from the people too. When I'm on the dais, I want people to be able to come to me and, and give me their concerns so that, so that I can bring them forward and we can make, you know, proper adjustments to what the town is doing to help those people as best as possible.
That sounds really good. I think that's absolutely what people want.
Of course, that is all inclusive of, you know, community safety and ultimately responsible governing. I really want to make sure our town keeps, stays in its lane. Government needs to stay in its lane and, and should not be encroaching on the individual rights of individuals and thereby their families. So.
And it's hard to know, it's hard for me to know how the town government does or could encroach into, like to me, let's talk about that. What is the role of a councilman and town government?
The role, in my, in my estimation, in my opinion, and I think it's the opinion of our, you know, the people who founded government in the United States, that, that the government should be there to ensure the freedoms of, of the citizens that it, that it is. I say over trepidously, because really the government is not over the people. The people should be over the government.
Should be.
Should be. That is what our founders wanted us, us to be. It's, it's of, by, and for the people is what our government is. And we just, we want to allow our government, or allow our people to have as many freedoms as possible. When, when you say restrictions, a lot of the times restrictions could be on property rights. You know, not allowing somebody to build something on the property that they want to. Now, when I say that, we need to make sure safety is taken into concern because we do have a general, a wider public than just those that are on the property. So we need to protect the, the, the general public with those, but we need to make our rules and regulations as flexible as possible for our people to do what they want to do to the best of their ability, but at, not at the detriment of other people.
Right. We have to protect the community, right? In addition to the individuals within the community.
So what, what can happen and does happen is the ordinances and the rules for doing things can become oppressive in the, in the thought that they're trying to protect others, but in doing so, they're overly limiting the, the, the personal freedoms of those to, to the detriment of the individual and not so much for the benefit of, of the majority. So.
Can you give me an example of that that has happened maybe in the last two or three years?
Well, there, I mean, the, the biggest one is, is a dicey one for, for many people and people will disagree with me on this. And I, and I understand that and I, I am a person that wants to hear different perspectives, all different perspectives from every angle of a problem. But one place that I felt that, that our town and our state really encroached on individual liberties was twofold with requiring masks in, in public.
Did Gilbert have a mask mandate?
I believe they did. If they didn't, it was, it was coming down from the state and it seemed like, it just felt oppressive where businesses, businesses couldn't make decisions of their own to, to whether or not a, a person could be masked, should be masked in their business or not.
That's interesting.
It was, I believe it was required that everybody that went into a public business, into a, into a business had to be masked.
It wasn't required where I operated my business in Mesa.
Maybe I'm incorrect, maybe, maybe it was, it was, it was the pressure of, of everybody else that I was feeling.
There were, there were towns that did it. Tempe did it.
Okay.
But I did not think, I know that Mesa didn't, and I didn't think Gilbert did.
Well, and if they didn't, that was good. If Tempe did, I think that was wrong.
Sure.
So that's an example of where a government can over, overreach. The, the vaccine mandate, you know, requiring, I don't recall whether Gilbert was requiring their employees to do it, but if there was a requirement for medical things like that, that should be, should be up to the individual to do.
Right. It's highly personal choice.
Exactly, exactly. If it should, anything that ultimately is a very personal choice. If, even if they claim, let's say, a person claims religious exemption for it, they, that, that should be given carte blanche acceptance because we have freedom of religion. And if you feel, if you feel, if you personally feel your, your faith is, is asking you not to do something, then you shouldn't, shouldn't be required to do it against your conscience. We, we need conscious, make sure our consciences are being observed as best as possible.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense. Um, let's move to, what I see right now on the dais is a dysfunctional government.
Yes.
You agree with that?
I would say for the most part, it's, it's not been functioning very well at all. I think there's a lot of personal animosity between individuals. I think that's where it comes from. And I think that has built very quickly, that built very quickly once the new council was established a couple of years ago. And I find it unfortunate, very unfortunate that they can't even be cordial to each other for the most part on, on the dais. And I, I find that very unfortunate. They can't lay their personal affronts, their personal frustrations with each other to the side while they're, while they're on the council. They, they got oftentimes get into, you know, make personal, personal comments towards each other, whether positive or negative. But it should be left in a, our dais should be a professional dais where they're, they're there to discuss the town business and not, not be frustrated by their own dislike or like of, of other, other members on the, on the, on that dais.
It does seem very divided. It seems divided right now almost on male and female lines. At least that's what it looks like to me, which is weird.
Yeah. It is. I, I hope to bring some, a, a great level of, respect back to the council. You know, every, I'm a big believer that every individual has, has individual dignity and are deserving of the respect as, as an individual person. And I will always respect those around me, everyone with that dignity that I believe that they were given with, with their creation. So the, I, I want to bring back that modicum of decency and to, to the, to the council. And I definitely believe I will bring that.
One of the things you shared with me is that you have been going, you've lived in Gilbert a long time.
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years.
Yes.
To council meetings regularly.
Yes.
For how long?
For, we've been, my wife and I both have been going to council meetings probably for 10 to 15 years. At least, at least 12, you know, 12 to 15 years that we've been here. And if we're not there in person, one of us is watching online because they do YouTube it, YouTube live stream it every, every time they're going. So we're, we're watching it and there have been multiple times where my wife, myself, even my, my children have come forward and spoken during public comment to address different issues that have been going on in the town that we are concerned about. So yes, we're, we're very active with watching the town, watching what's going on and seeing, and honestly making known our frustrations and giving our advice. So.
I think that that's a real advantage personally. I think that's a real advantage because you've been able to see what it is that the town government does. Because not everybody, I, I didn't know what, I mean, you kind of know, but to look at it on the day to day is a little different. And so you have a really good understanding of what it is that you're asking to be elected to do.
Right. Yes, absolutely. I think it's important that anybody who wants to serve needs to be familiar with what they're, or what they're asking to do. And I, I believe that I've familiarized myself over the years. My kids are, we like to say they, they haven't necessarily flown the nest yet, but they, they're out on their own. They're doing their own thing now. And it's, it's, I've got a lot of extra time, let's say, because I'm not, not actively raising my children anymore. So I can, I can come forward and really dedicate the time that I see is necessary to be a part of the decision-making process, the high-level decision-making process that the town council is supposed to be doing. The council should be directing our staff to go in a, go in particular directions. They shouldn't be making the minute decisions of the town, but allowing the staff to do it based on the direction that the, that the council is pushing them in. So because the council truly represents the people, because that's who we're, we are elected from. Every council member receives the votes from all 288,000 members of the, of the, or not members, but voting members. Gilbert has approximately 288,000 people now. We are voted from the entire public. We're not voted from a particular district within the town. So we, each one of us as the seven on the dais represent the entire town and their, their needs and what they, what we should be doing for them. So as opposed to a particular section of town that, that maybe like other cities like Mesa have districted.
Oh, interesting.
So, yes.
Got it. Okay. And what do you see are the biggest needs, let's say, over the next three, four years in Gilbert? For the entire community?
For the entire community, we definitely need to make sure we're focusing on our infrastructure. Infrastructure is important as we build out. We're, we're very close to completing our build out and are very quickly moving into our, our fill-in phase, you know, filling in the empty lots here or there. We need to make sure that we're, our town is as best as possible, and adjustments are always okay, but as best as possible following the voters, voter-elected general plan. That what we are expecting to be on particular areas of town are what's going to be built in particular or close to what is going to be built, what was expected to be built in those varying parts of town. And making sure that our infrastructure, our roads, our water, our sewer that, that get to those locations are built correctly beforehand, so we don't have to go in and retrofit to accommodate the, you know, what's been a lot of adjustments to the, to the general plan. I think that's probably one of the most important things. And reducing the regulations, the, the, you know, for permitting and things like that, so that people can more freely, more easily, less expensively produce what they want to produce on their land. So reducing that is extremely, reducing those, those restrictions are, are very important to me.
I don't know what those restrictions might be. So what restrictions exist?
They could be anything. It's, it's even just the, the process of getting a permit to build an extra, you know, something on your property that, you know, even, even something as small as putting up a pergola in your backyard. As long as it meets very basic requirements, it should be allowed to be put up and not have to go. I, I work in the landscape business and we, we do a lot of pergolas for, for homes in the backyards, but we have to go through a permitting process for it. While it's relatively easy for that, I can only imagine what it's like when you're building a, you know, a casita on, on the backside of a large piece of property that you have the, it's zoned to be able to put a casita in the backyard, but the amount of, of permitting and, and inspections and things like that, that the city is being, is requiring of the property owner can be oppressive and it doesn't allow for, for people that otherwise could afford it to be able to do it. And then it's the time factor too. The application process, the processing process, the, it, you know, the, the government gets backlog naturally with, with a lot of work and, but that causes a slowdown on the ability for those that are trying to install it to, to get their work done.
So would you advocate for streamlining the permitting process or getting rid of the permitting process?
But permitting is good, I believe. I believe streamlining, streamlining is, is the important piece there. Permitting, make sure that the, the product that's being developed or whatever is being put together is safe and reliable and structurally sound and things like that. Very good. It's the streamlined process of it. If you have an outside engineer do it, why do we need a, a town engineer to review the outside engineers? You know, to, to double check. I mean, obviously double checking is good, but trust but verify, you know. Yeah. Instead, let's, let's do that instead of reinventing the wheel in, in essence by having, in essence, having the, the town put their engineering stamp on it as well. So.
Yeah, that's a, a great example, I think. And there's always the ability to streamline in government, right? Always.
There, there always is. Rarely is it, is it, is it done. And I.
Right. It's not really a priority. It's not sexy.
Right. Because, I mean, when you streamline, you, you reduce the ability for the government to make its, make its money. You know, and if you reduce the cost, that, but that cost should be given back to the citizen and not, so that the citizen has, is able to hold on to their money to pay for what they want to pay for as opposed to paying for what the government wants to pay for. I think that a lot of times the, the excess of government has to do with, in excess fees. You know, they're taught, you know, permits, there's fees, there's lots of different additional costs that are tagged on in order to, for the town to afford to be able to do that. But it also, by streamlining it, it takes those costs away and it gives it back to, to the end user, I believe. So it, that's one way.
So there's a hit to the government budget and government revenue from streamlining. How would you propose that be made up?
Well, it would honestly be made up by reduction of staff, I, I believe. And that, that's not a bad thing. I think any business goes through periodically times where they work through their organizational chart and say, where are we duplicating? Where are we, where are we not getting the bang for our buck? And they're having to do selective reduction and it's just part of the business cycle. And I think the government, because it has what appears to be an unending flow of funds and guaranteed funds through taxes and fees and things like that, they feel that they are, the, the administrators oftentimes feel that, well, they've got to protect that pot of money as opposed to, we, we need to make it more of a, of a profit-centered idea or, you know, not make sure that we spend every dime that's given to us, but let's save as much as we give, are given to us and, and be able to return it. In fact, I would be very happy with creating some kind of cost-saving incentive through bonuses to employees or town employees to, if you're able to save us, you know, get to certain levels of saving, your, your budget is X. If you're able to get to, if you're able to save so many dollars from that budget, we'll, we'll actually bonus you personally for doing that and then return the remaining money back to the general pot or back to the, or back to the taxpayer so that they can use it how they want to. So, but right now, government, if you don't use what's in your pot, oh, let's hurry up and find something to spend it on so we don't lose it next time.
Right, right. Yeah. It's, it's, it's a structural systematic failure because we'd all be better off with that money, let's say, you know, developing parks faster or, or developing infrastructure or, you know, whatever, then we would be on the inefficiencies. But the system doesn't necessarily have a way to redirect the money.
How many, how many fewer potholes would we have if we were able to save money over, over there and be able to direct it over to the potholes or build, or, you know, plant more trees in the parks or, and, and be able to water the parks better so that they don't go dead during particular times of the year? So that they consistently look beautiful. Not that our parks don't look beautiful, aren't beautiful. They are. We have some of the best parks in, in the valley. Our community is, is beautiful. It is, when we talked earlier, Gilbert is a magical place. And it's, it, it really is. And there's something special about our, our town. And I love the fact that we maintain the name town because it is a magical place here in the East Valley. And we need to make sure we as Gilbert maintain our identity as Gilbert and not just one of, one of the many cogs in the East Valley. The, you know, communities in the East Valley, we are, while we are a community in the East Valley, we are Gilbert. And we are, we are the town of Gilbert. So, and we're differentiated by that.
I think the idea is wonderful and probably one that everyone would support, but it seems like a very difficult thing to achieve, especially when you're only, you know, you're in a part-time position for a very short period of years.
Sure. The, the position offers the ability to have a little bit of a, you know, a stump to stand on. You know, a, a box to, to cheer on the public from. And I think by maintaining, helping the town maintain a mentality of specialness is something that a council member can do from, from that perspective, from that voice box. And it's important that we do do that and that we don't lower ourselves to compare ourselves to those neighbors and say, but we're, we're, we're the same, we're just slightly better than the next door guy. We need to be better on Gilbert's standards, not on anybody else's standards. And yes, it's, it's, it's something that's hard to achieve for such a large community. But I think that the, the feeling is there. The people that I talk to, they, they recognize the specialness of Gilbert. There's a reason why people move to Gilbert versus other surrounding communities, because they want that feel. They, they felt the feel of Gilbert and they, they enjoy it. I, my wife and I, 17 years ago, when we moved into the, into Arizona, we, I had a job in Central Phoenix. So I, we could pick anywhere in the entire metro area to, to live. And based on varying different factors, we chose Gilbert because it was family-friendly, it was faith-friendly. We could see that there were so many different faiths active and going on. Every fam, you know, it seemed like the, it was very family-oriented. It still is. I mean, our average age is, is in the low 30s. Because we have so many kids in our neighborhoods and, and it's, it's fantastic to see that. We're not necessarily an aging community from the perspective of our, our, our average ages as a, as a citizen. And I think that's important that, that we continue to do that. Yes, we're going to grow older as, as we stay around. I mean, I, we moved here when my kids were five and now they're out, you know, they're out on their own. And so obviously people, once they come, they will stay and we want to maintain that specialness.
Gilbert right now has a huge black stain on it and so much so that it's, you've got local outrage and I'm one of those locally outraged people. And then you've got, you know, national articles and international articles. You've got the Arizona Republic blasting Gilbert for what they knew, what they shouldn't, what they did, what they didn't do with regards to teen violence and gangs, gangs in Gilbert. So please tell me what your thoughts are on this.
Well, I, I believe that, that Gilbert quoted and stated as one of the safest towns and cities in the United States. And we, we laud ourselves on that. We, we, we pride ourselves on that, on those rankings. Best place to live in, in Arizona in the United States. But I believe that our town, the structure, the, the police, we, they really had begun to rest on their, on the laurels of those, of those accolades. And I believe that our policing needs to get back into the communities. We need to have the, the, the police be our friends as opposed to being afraid of them when they show up down, you know, down the street from us. Or we need our, we need to refocus the police back into community policing and making sure that, again, they're our friends, that I, I think I mentioned to you some ideas that I had, you know. We're coming up on the Fourth of July. There are going to be many block parties where the, the block has to apply to the town to get, to get barricades to, to, to close down their street for, for the day, for the celebrations of the day. Well, when that happens, why not send out one of our police officers at one point during the day just to introduce himself to the, to those at the block party? I'm not here to do any, I'm not investigating anything. I'm just here to say hi, let you know I'm here. If you've got any problems, come forward. One of the things that in the, that happened or that I kept, I heard about a number of times at the, at the meetings, when the chief would come up and give his report, he would, he would some, oftentimes talk about an incident that occurred 12, 12, 14 months ago, that was just reported a, a couple of weeks ago. We just found out about it a couple of weeks ago. Well, why did it take that citizen that long to come forward? Were they afraid? What, you know, were they afraid of coming toward the police? Were the, were the police very pushed, pushed back when they, if they did come early and they said, oh, that's not something we need to worry about? Because there is obviously lack of investigation that's going on with, with the police department. When you hear about, you know, the In-N-Out case that was basically closed, shut down, put to the side, that occurred last August and then was reopened in December, January, when people started coming forward. Well, this happened back then, then they all, all of a sudden reopen the, the, the case or re revitalize the case, let's say. And so it, it's a matter of, of making sure that we're fully investigating everything, you know, as much as we possibly can and making it known to the public so the public can have their input. One of the things with that In-N-Out case, the, a lot of people were very upset because the films were never released to the public at the time. So nobody really knew that it went on. And then when they reopened it later on, they opened it up and people started responding and saying, oh yes, I, I see this, I see that, I, and bringing things forward. So we need to bring things to the public in a much quicker way. Obviously, police has, have investigations to do and have to keep certain things private. But calling and, and asking for public input is, is vitally important for us to do, you know, for not only the police to, to do the community policing, but allow the, the people to be able to, you know, see what they hear, you know, see and report what they see and, and bring things forward quickly. Or yes, I knew about that, but I didn't know that it was being investigated by the police. So let me go ahead and give my two cents worth in it. So.
That is one of the things that I think angers parents most is that there was this danger to our children that we were not made aware of. And the police can't be everywhere, ever, in any community. And so we have to rely on this partnership where we provide information to the police, the police provide information to us. And that's how we have a safer community. And what we saw is the parents of the victims were solving crimes and providing information to Gilbert PD. We have that information unequivocally. And Gilbert PD did literally nothing and then claimed they didn't know about the, quote, Gilbert Goons. So they knew that there were groups of teens going around terrorizing random people on the, like as part of a plan and then pretended that the Gilbert Goons was somehow new to them.
Yeah. They needed to get out to the victims when they first heard about it and help them understand that the police were there to be their friends and to be their help so that they, they're their first responders to those, to those instances. And I think that that failed tremendously, unfortunately.
So how do we move forward and get trust? Cause right now there is no trust. And I don't, I don't know that that's going to come from them being friendly and showing up because it's not, we don't have a friendly police force. We have a very friendly police force, but our police force didn't enforce the law.
There's no way to go backwards on, on, on the situation, unfortunately. We, we can't go back and change the facts of the past. All we can do is go forward. And I think that the stat or the, the stat, the, the council needs to direct our police department to come up. The, the council, uh, needs to direct our police department to come up with a, a plan of how to reengage the public. To re, uh, reaffirm their position in, in the community. As the investigators, we are here to help. We, maybe it's a matter of increasing staff. Uh, to, to do more investigative work, uh, to be able to handle a larger, you know. I'm sure if we look back on the, the history of, of Gilbert as our, as our population increases. The number of sworn officers probably hasn't increased as, as quickly as our population has increased, so. Obviously, when population increases, crime or, or encroachment on personal freedoms are going to increase as well. Not, not necessarily, uh, anything other than, than at the same rate as the increase in population. But we need to have the, the, the manpower behind it to be able to, to help the, that increase in population. And while technology, increase in technology is, is fantastic, we cannot rely entirely on technology. We have to. Rely on the interpersonal relationships between the public and the police department.
I, uh, expected just that. I expected when this first came out that we were gonna hear. You know, we're understaffed. We need to invest more in our police department in order to meet the needs of the community. But we didn't hear that. What we heard is, we did a great job.
Right, right. Now, it's, it's, uh, it's unfortunate. It's people trying to save their own jobs. Uh, I, you know, and I under- I get, I understand that, I get that, but I'm a big person, uh, in terms of, I, I, I believe in owning up to mistakes. If you made a mistake, tell me you made a mistake and tell me you're gonna try to do and you're going to do better as you go forward. That gives me a lot more confidence than making excuses for what occurred in the past. I, I, I am one who, if I screwed up, it's, oh, I, I take it on my own and you gotta carry that load yourself. And you can't make excuses and push it off onto somebody else or something else. Eh, it, you have to take ownership and you have to come up with a plan. To make sure that it doesn't happen in the future and you're always making adjustments. We have to make adjustments. We can't sit back and rest on la- on past successes. And I believe that is truly what, what has happened, uh, in that, in those cases. Is our town is, oh, wow, we're, we're rated so high, we're, and we sit back with our arms folded and say, we're so great. And we're not really being proactive at that point. And we always, as a, as a community. Uh, as a, as a government, as, as a police force, need to be proactive in helping to. Bosch and install, uh, uh, you know, potential future events. Not just looking back and saying how well we did yesterday. We need to see what we can do better tomorrow.
So if you are elected to council, what can we as voters count on you to do with regards to this situation?
I would, I would be encouraging the, the council as a whole to, uh, and in, and make my voice heard directly to the police. Chief to come up with a plan. What is, what, give me a, a five, ten step plan that you plan on doing in the next year. To help our community feel safer. And actual actions you're planning on doing to make our community safer, to, uh, to counteract these. These items, whether it's being particular patrols, being, uh, let's in, you know, increasing, you know, attempting to increase staff. Of course, there's recruitment problems as well, but you know, we. I don't hear that there's recruitment problems necessarily for our police department. But we need, we need to make sure that there is a plan in place. And then going back and checking on that plan and making sure that that plan is attempting to be implemented. Uh, you know, hearing a plan is one thing. Seeing the plan being, uh, done is a completely different thing. And making sure that the, and seeing if the results of that plan are appropriate, and if there, if the results aren't. Aren't garnering the re- the, the results that we're wanting or expecting. We need to make sure that the plan is being adjusted. You know, there, there's always adjustments to be made, uh, cause we don't know everything in the future perfectly. It, it, we, it's, it's, we need to give direction and hold accountable, hold them accountable to, to that direction is what we need to do.
So you would not advocate for the police chief to be replaced?
Well, let's, uh, I, I, I'm not going to say that right now. Uh, it depends on what he could come back with. Uh, with, in, in terms of a plan, is the plan that he comes back with satisfactory? Uh, I'm, I'm not his boss currently, but if I was his boss. We, we, there would be some significant discussions around that, I think, to see if, if something could be done to. If he could, if he's in the right position, is he the, is he the right, in the right seat on the bus?
So you, you would go in and analyze that, but give him an opportunity to perform under, under new standards. Is that? What I'm hearing?
At this point, I would not necessarily advocate for, for a complete, uh, revamping of our, our police department. I think they need to be given the opportunity to, to change. Yes, there were some drastic problems that occurred. Uh, I haven't been involved with it. Um, I may be, I may have a different perspective if I was. More intimately involved over the past two, two years and seeing what has been going on. Um, but being new. I, uh, new to. To the process, to, to, to really understanding the background, or maybe, maybe those directions have been given to him. And if those types of directions have been given to, to our police chief, then yes, he's failed tremendously in, in accomplishing those. But if he hadn't been given those, you know, given opportunities to recreate and, and process and come be- come back better. Then, then I think he still needs to be given that opportunity.
Okay. Do you think that the communication between the government and the citizens is working?
I, I don't think so. Um, I, I think so often, I mean, our, our. Just in the fact, eh, when you say government, I'm, I'm referring directly to the town of Gilbert. How, yeah, that's being handled. I, I find it disappointing that things like at our council meetings. Public comment was moved to the very end of the meeting. Uh, that is, you know. Our citizens, our families, our citizens should be the primary focus of, of our government. They should be numero uno for our council to take, take, uh. Uh, to, to take heed of, to hear from. And by pushing them from the very beginning of the meeting where they can come in and state their piece and be able to even go back to their families. Now, oftentimes because of the complexity and, and length of our council meetings. Pu- public comment isn't being heard until ten, ten thirty at night. And that takes somebody out of their home. Uh, for an entire evening, away from their family, away from the things that they need to be doing on their free time. Uh, all in the, eh, it, it needs, our communication with our citizens needs to be better. I'm one that I, while I come from a certain perspective, I, I, obviously, everybody comes from their own perspective. And, um, I have my principles, but I want, when we come up across an issue that needs to be resolved. I am one that wants to hear from all sides of that issue, so I can understand the perspectives of everybody. Involved that's being affected so that I can adjust my perspective. So that while not necessarily, not, not abandoning my principles in any way, but adjust how we need to. Uh, solve this issue that's going on. So I, I think that I would love to see. I would love to see our, our town chambers packed, uh, town council chambers packed every meeting. And for the majority of those citizens to come forward with issues that they're seeing and. And while a lot of issues aren't something that the council can in particular take care of, the, the council can make direction to staff. To address and try to help those citizens with those issues. And that's where the important thing is. And for the, and for our community to become more comfortable coming forward to the various different departments within the staff. To take care of those issues for them and making the, hopefully making the council the last. The last place, the last destination for trying to communicate, just like you go higher on the chain of command in the military, you, you. Will start it, you know, some issue occurs, you go to the department, you don't get response, you continue up and hopefully. None of those issues come, come to the council because the staff's taking care of it appropriately.
So I, I, I watched when the council moved public comment. It was as simple as making a motion. And then it was done. So it would be very easy to undo that. Why do you think this council has not done that?
Well, that, this council is the one that moved it. Uh, so they, they, they.
But they've gotten a lot of public backlash. Like, the public is angry about that decision.
Yes, and I, I can't answer as to why they have not moved it back. I think. Uh, I think it's important that they do and that will be one, if it hasn't been moved back to the front. That will be one of the first things that I ask our council to move on is to move our public comments back to the front. And now, I do agree that we need to put time limits on, on how much people can, how long people can stay. Cause somebody could get up and pontificate for two hours if they wanted to, if, if he didn't do that. And so we do have some restraints on. On, on how long people can comment for, uh, but three minutes is, is plenty to get the, the message across. And even two minutes if, if necess- if necessary. I know that the, the, they, they revamped the. Uh, you know, if so many people want to speak, they reduce the amount of time. And I think that's beneficial. For the public at large so that everybody can get their voice heard, even if, when we have a large number of people coming forward, the time is reduced. For each individual, but it doesn't reduce it to a point that they can't get the point across that they're looking to bring forward. And. I think that's, eh, it's important that we give our citizens ample time to, to come forward. I, I have thought about the possibility, and I don't know whether this is legally, uh, uh, available to us or not, but to have. Actual true listening sessions for the council where we set, uh, another night of the week. Um, maybe once a month or however often, or if situations arise, not make it a, a, a subcommittee to hear, no. But to, but to allow the public to, you know, here's a night. We, all seven of us will be on the dais. We, due to public meeting law, we cannot respond to what you're saying, but we can give direction to, to our staff. Please come forward and, and give us. Your input on what's going on in town around the issue that we were just talking about, the, the Gilbert Goons. Why not have an evening of, just let the, let the town people come forward and express their views? And let them talk it out, uh, to the dais, so at least the, the seven of us, the seven that are on the dais can he- really hear what's going on. And while we can't necessarily respond to, uh, to what's being told to them at the time, it can be brought up at a later meeting. It can, you know, bring, we can bring forward the ideas that were brought forward, or we can direct the staff from that point. To go forward and investigate or take a look at different things that the public is bringing up. Because, uh, uh, more minds will bring a better, more minds together will bring a better solution in my opinion. To just about anything.
I do think that that was a real, I think the, the subcommittee was, um, was the wrong move. It was not good for the council in terms of cohesion. It wasn't good for the community because. It's less effective and, eh, yeah, I just wasn't a fan and it felt performative and it felt political.
Yeah, I, I, I went to one of the meetings, uh, the, the subcommittee meetings and it, 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 it was, it was a voice box. It was a place where the citizens could really get forward, come forward. And it, and because it was a subcommittee, it allowed the three members of the council to be able to respond to, to those comments. Um, but what I think was also needed was for all seven of them to hear the comments. And, and be able to take those comments into their heart and come back at a later time. Well, you know, because they can then take those things that are coming forward in the dis- in the, in the presentations of the public. And they can bring them forward on an agenda item at a, at a, at the next meeting, at the, at a later meeting, and they can discuss it as, as a whole. As long as three members say, I want to talk about that, it should, or if the mayor herself wants to talk about that particular item. Then it can be put on the, put on the agenda for, for the next meeting or, or the meeting after that, to be discussed as a whole.
Let's talk about the salary portion of the budget. And kind of the drama there. And just to give people background, if you're not familiar. There is a lot of controversy because in the first council meeting in June. There was a resolution slipped in to increase the salaries of the councilman and the mayor. But it wasn't added to the agenda. So it was thrown into the consent agenda without a previous discussion. So that was very controversial. And then at the next, they ended up pushing it to the next meeting for a vote. And then at that next meeting, they didn't take the vote and they pushed it out. Can you please tell me what your thoughts are on that?
Well, eh, the, the, the council currently gets paid, uh, a, a, a very small amount to serve the community. And, uh, I believe that serving on council is truly that, a service to the community. Uh, it shouldn't be something that we as individuals make our money on. And the, the proposal from the dais in that res- in that, uh. Um, motion, uh, was to increase the salary. From around twenty-one thousand to around fifty-three thousand dollars, which is approximately the, the, the pay scale. For the lowest paid full-time employee of, of the town. And this was, I believe, uh, you know, one man made this, or one person on the dais made this suggestion in the motion. Uh, so I don't know who all was necessarily. Behind it, but, or for it, but I, I do believe that. Twenty-one thousand, it's, it's not meant, the town council is not meant to be a full-time job. Uh, it's meant to come together. Once every two weeks to give guidance to our staff to do their full-time jobs. To move the town of Gilbert forward. And we're there to, um, direct the policy that the staff is supposed to follow. To direct policy, um, is not, eh, shouldn't, shouldn't be a full, full-time job in my opinion. Uh, without any more real responsibilities than that. The. It, it, it. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to cut this, cut this piece. I apologize. Um. The council is, eh, shouldn't, we, I don't agree with politicians making their money. From the positions that they hold. Uh, they, if, if that is, if the council is a full-time job. Then people will begin to fight, uh, during the election to maintain their job. And it, it, that, it's not going to affect me whether or not I'm on council or not in, from my personal finances. And that's the way it should be, so that we can really get good ideas out there amongst the public. Uh, the, the, the amount of money that the council currently makes. It does pay for the babysitters that are needed, uh, for those members that have, that have, um, uh, children that, that need that time. Um, that it does afford tho- those council members that. The extra money to take the extra vacation time if they need to, things like that. Uh, that's all it should be. It shouldn't be something that, that. Is our sole, uh, sole place of income. Uh, and if it, if it is, and we want people to be serving on, on this council. We need to, we need to allow them the, the flexibility to have enough to, to let them afford to be on it, but it shouldn't be their only job. We need people coming from the public to represent us. We don't need, um, those. Eh, that are independently wealthy, are retired, are, you know, own their own business and can. Have their, have their employees do their business for them, tho- those types of things. We need people there that come out of the, out of the ground. Uh, uh, out of the ground, the grassroots to, to lead our community. That's what we, we're really founded on, so.
So what do you think about the pushing of the vote? So that was weird to me, like, they were ready to vote at the first meeting, but wouldn't vote at the second meeting. What do you think about that?
Well, they, they, uh, the, a person who, the council member who originally suggested to push the vote. If I recall correctly, suggested to push the vote to, to August, um, because this council member knew that they weren't going to be at the meeting in, at the second meeting in June. Uh, then another council member said, no, we need to have this discussion sooner than this. Let's push it to the eight, to, to the second meeting in June. Uh, or bring it forward to the second meeting in June. And then, for some reason, nobody recognized at that time that. Oh, this council person isn't going to be here, won't be available for discussion. And decided to, uh, then. At the be, you know, after many people of the public decided to come, come out, take time out of their time to make their voices heard. Came forward to the council meeting, they decide to not only push the meeting back so that this other council member could be there. I understand why they want the other council member there for the discussion. I, I, I completely understand that. But then to tell the public, you were expecting this discussion, you came here to give us your thoughts on it. But no, we're not even gonna allow public comment on it. I think that truly was the. Was the major issue, uh, of that, of that particular day. Why, why not let the people come and speak to what they wanted to speak about? So, I, it, it could have other, other meanings behind it. I don't know. I can't speak to as to. Why they didn't recognize that one of the council members wouldn't be there and that was going to be a barrier. why they didn't recognize that one of the council members wouldn't be there and that was going to be a barrier to them uh from the very beginning. Uh, so I, I agree with pushing the discussion off from the first, from the first uh moment when it was first proposed uh at the time of the budget. Uh, what really disappointed me as well was the fact that the budget was approved uh six to one with, without a word being said about the budget. It was the, the entire hour discussion at that council meeting was about this, the, the proposed pay raise through the motion, not about the budget itself. And we, they passed a two-point-three billion dollar budget uh without, I understand discussion occurred beforehand, but there was no discussion at the time of the vote. Uh, it was one of the first times I've ever seen that occur. So.
So every single year, the council passes a budget. And you've been, you've been watching this for twelve or fifteen years.
Right.
And usually there's, there's disagreement on some issues, which you would expect.
Absolutely. There, there is usually some disagree, agreement on issues. Uh, and, and voicing why there's the disagreement and why I'm voting no on this budget. Why I'm voting yes on this budget. While it's not uh entirely what I agree with, I agree with most of it. So I, I am voting yes or I am voting no because of that. You know, there was, there was none of that at this meeting. Yes. There had been some of that in previous meetings, I will grant that, but nothing on the record when the official vote took place. So.
Wonderful. Well, we have taken up a lot of time, so I won't take up any more of your time, but I really appreciate you coming on the show and sharing your views and letting us know what we would get if we voted for you. And everyone needs to know that the primaries coming up, the primary is coming up very, very soon. The deadline on the primary is July thirtieth. And.
Early, early voting, the ma, the ballots go out on July third, so you should be receiving them shortly after the fourth of July. Uh, if you receive an early ballot, I would encourage you to return it right away uh and make sure you vote the entire ballot. For the town uh elections, this is most likely the, the general election for us. So the people you vote for, for the town will not, in all likelihood, will not be on the November ballot because if you get fifty percent more, or uh just a little bit more than fifty percent of the vote needed for either one of the two positions on the town council or the mayor's position, they don't have to go to the, uh, to a runoff election in, 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 at the, in November. So July thirtieth is the vote in person day. Uh, and between July fifth and July thirtieth, please make sure you vote in some way, some form, some fashion. And if, if you don't mind, if I could put out a little plug for myself. If you, uh, if you do like what you heard today, please reach out uh to, to me and my campaign. We're at accurseofarcouncil.com. Uh, you can also call me, uh, call us directly at our headquarters, four eight zero five nine zero four one four zero. And I'm also available on Facebook and Twitter or X and uh just reach out, reach out to us in any way, especially if you want to sign. Uh, signs are important in, in, in the town election. So.
Thanks so much for listening to the Modern Divorce Podcast. Remember, anything you've heard today or anything you read online is not the replacement for actual consultation with an attorney and does not create an attorney-client relationship. Even if you called in and we spoke to you, you are anonymous and we don't have your details and you have not become a client of Modern Law. However, we would love to speak with you or you should seek out the advice of legal counsel or counseling or any other expert near you. And if you have an idea for a show topic or you need to speak with an attorney in Arizona, you can reach me at info, I N F O, at mymodernlaw.com.